Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Need to rise for pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How could you not reading the district's mission statement?
Oh, let's see here.
I do.
Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all markets.
Okay. So, the purpose of this meeting is for interviewing the three of you. Welcome. Thank you guys for coming. You should all have a sheet of questions in front of you. We're going to each ask all three of you the same questions. So, all nine questions should be being asked. And they'll, each one of you will have an opportunity to answer each question. Does that make sense? So, you each all get the nine questions. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with you a moment. Okay, ask the first question.
Why do you want to be a school board trustee?
You first?
Sure.
Well, I just want to do my part to kind of give back. I come from a long line of educators. And my kids will tell me I'm famous and frustrate them all the time with when they ask a question, what's wrong with moral, I say, well, we need to support education more. And that's the key to just about everything, is have an educated public to make a decision on things. So, it's time for me to put my money where my mouth is. The short story is my daughter works at Mountain View. And she said, Dad, you live in a spare life, there's no money, you need to do this. And she went through the Lakeland City High School. And I knew all along she was destined to be a teacher, but she was kind of a bit of a money snob and thought she needed to have more money than that. So, she got an operations management degree from University of Idaho. Went to Boise to make a lot of money doing something she hated. And then we finally convinced her to get back into teaching. And she did that. And then, when it goes around, comes around, she said, Dad, you asked me to get an education, you have an opportunity to get an education as well.
Are you ready to proceed or do you want to take orders? I believe Mr. Redmond needs to answer that question as well.
Same question?
Yes.
That's a good question. Why do you want to take a meeting from outside? Well, I guess I've had my challenges as a representative too. So, I, and it's a, it's a high pain position too, you know? No, I think it's very important. We can offer back to our community. And I really believe in children. My middle daughter's a teacher in Olympia, so away from here. So, I've raised five children and I've been blessed. They've all, they're all doing quite well. And truthfully, I mean, in short answer, I just, you know, I feel I want to give back to my community. I've been in the community for a long time. And, you know, I've worked with several educators here and the athletic department too. So, that's the short answer.
Okay.
I would like to be a school board trustee because I believe I can give back to this community in really good ways. I have a financial background. And I, I've had three kids go through the school district. And I just really find education the most important part of our lives. And giving back to the Lakeland District is a high priority on my list.
All right. So, I'll start with Mr. Redmond. What are your strongest character traits and skills that you'll bring to support the school board?
Well, I, I've been a businessman for a long time. Since 1970 in there, I have different types of businesses. I think I sent that information to you also. And I think that's important when you're talking about spending money and what you want, how you want the youths to grow up when they get out into the world, real world. And I think I can add something there.
My strongest character trait? Probably be my, my financial background, my willingness to give back to, to this community that's given so much. I've been a government accountant for 16 years now. And I, I have a good eye for, for using taxpayer dollars and where, where best. And I'd like to learn more about how school districts are run and how they give back.
Probably best traits are I'm a good listener and good at building consensus. My role as a psychiatrist, my job is not to tell people what to do, but to help them reach their own decisions by helping them understand what their values are and kind of get to those decisions on their own.
Thank you.
All right, so let's start. What do you perceive as the proper role of a board member in the relationship with staff, administration, and the public?
I would have to say liaison. Somebody that can, that can take the ideas and thoughts from all the different directions and put them into best decisions for our taxpayers and, and our kids and the community as a whole.
I would agree with that statement. And I'd also help communicate that back to the public in the most effective manner, into the teachers and administrators.
Well, one thing I like to do is, if pointed, I like to actually go to every school in this district and have an opportunity to talk to the administration in that school and maybe some teachers and kind of see how they feel the district has been run. And actually, I have to compliment you on the way you have run it. I mean, of the three districts in Cooney County, I think you're doing fantastic. You got a, you got a high graduation rate, higher than any other public school in Cooney County. And I also love the fact that you have open five-day-a-week meetings. And masks are emphasized all the time. I mean, I realize they're important at times. But, so, I'd just like to continue on with, as you've been doing, and maybe searching other areas that we could, that I could be beneficial at.
What do you see as the basic purpose of the public schools?
Preparing kids for the next stage of their life, you know, biologically, psychologically, socially. Such a difficult time, especially in the junior high and high school years. There's so many ways they go the wrong way. They're learning so much about themselves and where they fit in the world. So, just getting them prepared on all aspects, biologically, psychologically, socially, from the next step in their life.
Well, that's certainly the gist of it. I mean, I, I think they just, in this environment today, it's allow them to go out there and make a difference. And, you know, we've got a lot of dissension out there. And, you know, the, the key is not for them to sit at home till they're 25 or 26, you know, with their parents, but to be out there, have an opportunity or living. One thing I think would be really important that, and quite true, I think it's important for parents too, to realize that the two-year technical, like K-Tech, is so important. Not everybody needs to go to college, you know? I'd say 60% or more of the classes should really consider that. And, you know, they can come out without college debt and make a lot more money. So, I'd like to see a lot of that emphasized too.
I would say the basic purpose is providing kids with the education that they can learn to adapt and be productive members of society, whatever career or not that they choose to go into. But making sure that they're socially and emotionally prepared for going out into the real world.
Thank you. Okay. Given the controversial issue, given a controversial issue, how would you gather information to make an informed decision, Mr. Redmond?
The mic here?
Yes.
Well, there could be a lot of those out there. Of course, you know, that's why I respect the trustees here. And Dr. Meyer, that you, you run into a lot of those at times, even though this levy is a controversial issue right now. Of course, you can't, you don't know for sure, but I did vote for it. I like absentee ballots, so I can really research things. I came in here the other day and I, you know, I found out that, you know, 13% of that is, is staff salary. I'd like to see it broken down a little bit more personally, you know? But, you know, there has a lot of good issues in there. But anyway, you just have to research the issue and, and see the, listen to the pros and the cons and work it out that way.
I would make phone calls, read as much as I possibly could, find out as much as I could, learn about people's personal experiences, to learn every side that I possibly could. I know that's difficult sometimes, but just getting as much information as I can and learning how I can express that back to our community.
Well, controversy certainly means there's strong opinions on both sides. So, I try to gather information from both sides and then try to take as much of the emotion out of it as possible. And one of my favorite sayings is, boys who are going to stand or do something, situations like this, will just do something, stand there, work on it, talk about it, think about it, and then try to take emotion out of it and make a decision with the help of your colleagues.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have any specific changes you believe need to be made to the school district policies?
Not anything specific. And as far as policies, I, I think we're moving in a very good direction in our, in our district. Maybe some processes could be streamlined. But I think policies, just staying current and making sure that they're updated with current issues is, is going to be important.
Well, I've looked at the policies online. I'd have to say I don't have enough information on the backstory behind and the making decisions right now. So, I think I would wait and kind of learn, learn the process before I try to change anything, try to not break anything that's not broken, or fix anything that's not broken.
You know, I don't know how much emphasis has been on the Constitution. But I teach or host a constitutional class in Cooney County. And I, I think our government is so important. I used to send, write your congressman to the government classes here newsletters. And Matt Neff said he, you know, he paid attention to him, you know? So, I really would like to see emphasis on that. So, we know what our state government is, our constitution, state constitution, our US con, and maybe quite true. I don't know if you're really emphasizing that, but I do think that's important, particularly this day and age.
We might as well start with Randy, since I keep going this way again.
Oh, you're going to change it.
Do you have any curatory interests with Lakeland Joint School District or K-Tech, which also includes direct relatives that have financial interests that would create conflict in your role as a trustee?
Nope, nope. I'll add that, no, just a couple of teacher, teacher, my sister-in-law's a teacher. So, that's, that's it.
Okay.
No, I, I know it was a partnership with private and educators. And I, I don't have any particular interest, but I learned a lot about it when I was representing. And I think it's so important, so.
I believe so. I have a daughter that's a family and community science, or consumer science teacher at Mountain View. That's about it.
Okay. In the spirit of mixing things up, I'll start with Ms. Erin. What makes an effective board member?
Well, I think we've talked and touched on some of those in earlier questions. It's an individual who can work as a team, an individual who can, is willing to put their personal needs aside and listen to all sides of the issue, again, kind of take the emotion out of it and do what's best ultimately for the kids. We've got this statement, every student matters. So, everything you do is to come back to that. What's going to help every student matter and feel like they're important in the school district?
Well, I think the key is listen to the parents and the educators based on what's best for the children. That would be focused.
I think I would go back to my answer to number three on that and being a liaison between community members, teachers, parents, staff, and being able to make decisions based on all of the information that I can gather and understand and make decisions and communicate that back to the community. Thank you.
All right, so the last question, we'll start with Mr. Redmond right here. Describe your understanding of school district revenue sources and expenditures.
Well, that's a, a very interesting area, of course. When I was, as a representative, of course, we went through all the, all the finance, because we had to prove in the House. And I think right now is 87% of the bonding from the federal, state actually pays for all the PT staff. And, and that's, the purpose for the levy is to make up the difference for what your budget is. One thing I think that's important to know, Representative Wendy Harmon has added another four and a half million from the, you know, all the care programs and everything for the K-Tech area. So, I think if we can find other avenues of funding, and I know we'd all love to have the funding come straight from the state, so the state property owners wouldn't have to be concerned about it. Now, I think, what is it, 7,200 or something, 7,500 that you per student in here versus like 22,000 in Washington DC, where they're doing a terrible job of teaching, you know? Money is important, but how you utilize that money is even more important. And I, hopefully with some of this stimulus, which this last bunch, I'm not sure how much is really going to go to education, will help out some too. That's always a challenge. And, you know, we increased, increased the programs for salaries the last few years, last eight years, I think, trying to increase the education monies to staff, particularly teachers for the children. Particularly when you've got Washington State that pays a lot more, it's, it's sometimes challenging. So, but, you know, that's always an interesting area that you have to deal with.
I understand that we have state funding and levy funding, bond funding. I understand that they're all limited on what can be spent out of that for different things. Like I said, I have a financial background. I've been in government accounting for six years, 16 years. So, while that's been in municipal and county governments, I know that, that schools are different. And I want to learn more about how that funding happens. And so, yes, I have a broad range financially, but I want to learn more and understand that better.
I understand this job is going to be a lot more difficult if we don't pass the levy another week. More power to whoever's on that board when that happens. 26% of the funding coming from the community here. And our values and trying to keep schools small, all-day kindergarten, sports activities is, is going to be greatly damaged if we don't get that levy passed. And so, that's the situation we're in right now. Hopefully, we can work with whatever funds we do get.
Okay. Now, in wrapping up these questions, do any of you have questions for us with regard to being a trustee or any of the questions that were asked? Is there anything you would like to elaborate on or you have questions of us?
I thought about it. I hope I'm not opening up a hornet's nest here. But I noticed that after this spot's filled, three of the people will be appointed and two elected. And is there anything we should know about why there's so many appointed positions and only two elected positions? Is that just a big question to ask?
Well, I don't think it's too big of a question. I know that the election came up and I chose to run. And I know the past board members that have left have left for various, usually personal reasons. So, I don't know if, if that answers your question, but.
Well, there's a trend right there.
No, I don't think there's a trend. I do know that there has been a perspective, and maybe Rob can elaborate on it, that, you know, it's, what's challenging as a trustee is, at least from the perception that I've been given, is you don't get a lot of pat on the backs, but you do get told a lot of times that you're doing a lot of things wrong. So, I mean, that's just kind of, I guess, the nature of the beast. But you learn to grow with it, so, and.
Let me ask my dad, who's a principal, about the advice going into this house, if I was crazy or not.
Well, you know, and to your point, it's been an incredibly challenging year. I would say that, that has some, you know, some merit. Everybody has their own reasons, you know, for whether to continue to the service. Because it really is, it's about service. I mean, we, you know, there's a, there's a lot of time devoted to the research and the meetings. And, you know, I, I can't speak for the two other board members that, that left. But, you know, I know one of them had quite a few years of service. And I mean, that's a lot, that's a huge commitment. I can only speculate, but appointees, you know, for whatever reason, when somebody decides that, you know, they, it's just too much, you know, the, the reward isn't quite, you know, doesn't, it doesn't weigh out or things, circumstances change, then we have to appoint. So, I mean, it's not always, you know, our choice. But, you know, we have a board of five. And to be effective, you need all five positions filled. So, you know, everybody, everybody has challenges in their lives. I think that the past year was definitely a challenge for a lot of people. They have affected some of their decisions. So, you know, the best thing we can do is to, you know, to fill the positions with the, you know, with the people we think will contribute and move on, because, you know, the work never ends. Doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how many positions are vacant or filled, the, the work never ends.
Well, in your position, trustee Harris, was somebody who worked for the district, so they had to, was.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, you know, and I, I was an appointee as well. But, you know, I believe that, you know, CFO Wallace, when he went into the position, his position was big. But I went through the same process as you, got to be interviewed. And, you know, it's definitely been a challenge, but it's also been fulfilling.
I know there's a number of extra special meetings this year, I imagine because of COVID, so they're going to take a little pressure on folks to.
Yeah, like I said, it's been a very challenging year.
Yes, yes, it has.
But hey, you know what? We've come out on the other end of it.
Yes. Do you have to add anything?
I think you guys pretty much covered everything. As you just bring, I always, when people ask me, my reply to them is, it's a position of passion. And without passion, I think, you know, not that those that came before didn't have passion, but I can see where people can hit a burnout point if they come in thinking it's one thing, right? Because it's a political position. Although we're giving back to our community, you know, in my opinion, that's really where we, where we sit. So, I always view it as a, as a position of passion. And it's your passion that drives you to sit and see.
Now, I'm sure I didn't do an overly good job of explaining this process in the beginning. This is my first go at this. We've asked you the questions and you've responded. Now, in an open session, we do need to deliberate over the interviews. And then we will cast our votes. They'll pass off to the clerk, who will read them to determine who was chosen. By chance, if there is a three-way tie, we do have a process to walk through that. I don't know if you would like me to explain that now or if we get down to it, you want an explanation then. So, okay.
I think there's great that there's three, three people coming here to the fore, a position where you get yellowed.
We were surprised too. And trustee Major Slesknot's not here. She is on vacation, so we apologize for that. But, you know, she's left too. So, you're like, go have fun. Okay.
So, you have a question. Do either of you have questions for us as far as?
My question might be a reverse. What is your, I know you mentioned passion. Okay. What is, what is the experience versus last year? Let's put that one aside and see what a normal year is like. What is your experience as a trustee?
Experience in?
Your act year. Personal feeling and activity and, you know, what you, what you can do for the, the school district and the community.
Well, you know, I have, I put one child graduated through the board on the school district. And I have twin daughters that are juniors. So, you know, my, my goal was to just ensure, you know, that their education was, and the school district's education was, you know, stayed on the right path. And it's always been, so, so I grew up here. I graduated from a neighboring district, but I grew up here. And honestly, the Lakeland School District has always had a great reputation for really the education side of it. If you were to choose, you know, people shop for the Lakeland School District, for homes in the school district. And there's no rea, you know, there's a reason for that. It's for, you know, lower-class sizes, the focus on the, the kids and the individualism and making sure that everybody's equipped to learn, because everybody learns differently. So, you know, the experiences for me were just interacting with, you know, the different administrators in different schools and being a part of giving an. the different administrators in different schools and being a part of giving an opinion of a parent. Because, you know, my opinion is maybe different than Michelle's or than Ramona's. And that's the beauty of the school board is that everybody has a perspective. We all give our perspectives. We all, you know, make a decision. And I might not agree with, you know, my personal viewpoint. But as a whole, when we come together as a board of five and we make a decision, then we get behind it because we are a school board. That's kind of the neat part is that you get to see different perspectives. But the important thing for me was to represent the parents. Because not everybody on the school board is a parent of children in the school district. So, you know, I felt like that was important. I mean, school board for the school district, you know, if my kids are in the school, I kind of want to look out for them and make sure that they live in a world where I put up.
Well, for me, my passion is, is not as vocal as Ramona's. My children all graduated from the Lakeland School District. I now have grandchildren attending Lakeland School District. And I was, I struggled when the bond came up and how that was handled. And I just didn't understand what was going on. So I took it upon myself to become more active because my grandchildren will graduate through this school district. And it's important for me that it maintain the educational integrity that it's founded, that the foundation of the school district is on. Because we've always had a strong academic presence. We may not have always had strong presence in other areas that some schools do. But, you know, the reality is the academic portion is what sets us apart, at least in my mind. And I think we need to stay there. So that's, that's kind of how I got involved and ran. And I'm so glad that I did because I have learned a tremendous amount. And it's opened my eyes to a lot that I didn't know, that I think a lot of parents aren't privy to, that I wish they were. So I would advocate for more parental involvement on all levels because that's the only way you're going to have an informed public. But I, it's been a journey. It's only been a year. I've only known school boarding through pandemics, so that's been fun. But now I would, I would trade it.
Now you're the chair.
Now I'm the chairperson, yes. Learning as I go, it's great. All right, so any other questions from any of you? Okay, so now I guess we deliberate? Okay. Questions, comments, thoughts? Because we, we did this, because we've, we've only sat through, we had, trustee Majors came on board during the pandemic. And that was done via Zoom, so. Do we have any, how do we do this?
You know, the last time I did this, I was the chair. And I really don't, you know, that was, that was for you.
The board has a prerogative. You, you three can discuss it. You just have to do everything in open session. So you three can ask questions to each other and deliberate. And then, or you could just choose to vote and see where it is without deliberating. It's up to the board.
Okay.
Whatever you feel is best.
What would we like to do?
Well, I would just like to say that I was appreciative that we got the response that we got from the people.
Yes.
It's going to be a hard decision. I can see areas of strength that the board could use and the district can use in all three candidates.
Yes.
You know, sort of like the last ones that we interviewed in my brain were a thousand places, you know, because I see the ability for fitting in. But I think that the board, in my opinion, has a hole that I'm sure everybody in the room knows I would like to see filled, which is financials. You know, so that's, not that everybody isn't qualified for a certain position, but I really do feel like that is a weakness of the board at this, at this point. I think our policy coverage and, you know, the district running and all that with the help of Dr. Meyer, I think we're strong there. But I know from my own perspective, there are those things that I run across with the financials all the time that, you know, maybe really needs help with. I'm not sure.
Okay.
That's, that's, yeah. Obviously, just reading the skills or, you know, probably just giving board to write, just say, I'd be all right. You know, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, Heinrich?
Heinrich. Heinrich.
Obviously, I can see, you know, multiple strengths there that would fit in the board and the district itself. But that's, that's what I believe is a financials.
I think that's my. Do you have any deliberation or do you want to take a vote or what do you, what would you like to?
I'm just kind of digesting.
I hear you.
We don't, we don't just go down or does that, what's the rules?
They, they can, as long as they all three stay in here, that the board chair can decide, they can decide what they, how they want to proceed.
It's a, you know, junior.
It really doesn't matter to me and I don't have anything.
Yeah, we're in a, we're, we have to maintain the public forum. So if the three of you would like to leave, you're more than welcome to. We will vote, but don't go far because we'll have to have you all come back in when we cast our vote. But, I mean, as long as, it's my understanding that, you know, we're, we deliberate. You three can remain seated. You're free to leave if you need a plate break or whatnot. But I, I mean, I don't really have much to deliberate on. So for me, I, I gather my information and I get both cast and vote.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I, you know, I'm going back and forth in my head because, you know, each of you have different strengths. And, and so, you know, obviously there's only one that will be chosen. And that doesn't, you know, it's not a knock to any of you. But, you know, I think that all three of you, the, the thing is, is that, like I said, as a board, it's five independent people. It's five different points of view. And so, you know, in my decision, I'm trying to think of how it would well, you know, how well-rounded the, the board would be, you know, because the different pieces of the puzzle. So that's where my deliberation in my own head is. Is what piece do I think we benefit the board? And, you know, the, the other thing to this is, it's, you know, really essentially, it's the three of us making this decision. And it's not just for a year or six months.
Right, right.
This is, this is a, pretty much a three-year term. So it's a, it's a, it's an important decision that I don't take lightly. So, yeah, I mean, deliberating, I don't really, it's not about, I don't have a 100% opinion of which way I want to go yet. But so really deliberating isn't.
Well, one thing I would like to encourage all of you to, even though I'm, I'm very thankful that you turned in the application, the board and the district can still use your support. I still, you know, whether you sat on the board or not, I, I really think that our, our community is changing so much. And there are so many things to do that I, I still, you know, think that the board needs more help from the community. You know, and the, and the schools and stuff, so that's another opportunity to, but.
Okay, should I, I'd get to vote also. Okay. So not necessarily needing to have deliberation, do we already have to cast a vote or do we need time?
I probably, well, I, I would like to actually, if it's okay, ask a question of each of them, to all of you really. Not that it makes any difference, but, you know, time commitments, because we talked about.
Yeah.
We had quite a few.
Yeah.
So, so the commitment of time required to be on the school board, how would you handle that? As far as, you know, your flexibility and your availability and, because it does require, it's not just once a month.
We're trying to get there.
We're trying to get there.
And things always come up.
Oh, nice.
I'd have to get up a lot of football, so I'm going to do that. We watch near as much football, but I work a seven-on, seven-off schedule at the hospital. So every, every other week I've got the week off. That helps. And then the, the way I do business is I, I work till the work's done. So I can come in early and go late. And that's probably what I'd be doing on some of these nights when I'm having to fit in school board.
I'm retired, so time commitment is not a challenge.
Free spirit.
In fact, the, the benefit of maybe I wouldn't sit at home meetings.
I do work Monday through Friday, eight to five, but I also have flexibility in that schedule to leave early for board meetings and, and to be here when needed. So, and that's already been discussed with my employer, just, hey, heads up, I'm doing this. And it's just trying to stay up front of that, so.
Okay.
And my daughter's graduating this year, so yay, I'll have more free time there, so.
Okay.
We're kind of on the double shoulders side because the girls are going to be seniors and our Alaska's, it's like.
Oh, it's hard.
Yeah, it is hard. And not that, you know, I mean, we're all busy people.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not that you can't be a busy person and fit it in, but, you know, just know that it's, it's probably more of a commitment than you realize that it is.
And we try not to make it, I shouldn't say we, I'm trying not to make it more of a commitment than it really is. But I do think that we are, we are kind of transitioning into being better informed and more focused driven with how we're part of the district. So that's, that's key. And we're trying to be, poor Rob works a unique schedule, so I'm like, we can't keep going super late. But yeah, so yes, there is time involved.
Yeah. It's tough.
It is.
Good candidates. I'm glad to see you.
Yes.
When it's, when it's a tough decision, that means you've got good candidates.
Yes, yes. So when are you ready to cast a vote?
Yeah. I mean, I am waffle, but I.
Okay. Are you, you want to ask more questions? Got a few more questions?
No, I, I'm probably, I'm probably good. I'm not needed in the pen.
Again?
Yeah, we're all children.
Rob, I'm going to ask one more question, just so you know. Okay, no, then. Eric, you made several references to removing emotion. What does that mean for you?
Well, I don't think anybody operates as well and makes a good decision is when they're in an emotional state. One of my favorite statements to my clients is that emotions trumps cognition. I mean, we've all done one stupid thing through emotion.
Right.
So it's really important to kind of give yourself time to let that die down, look at the facts, understand what we're here for. We're here for the kids, you know, we're here for the families of the kids and the administrators and the teachers. And so it's not about us, it's not about the emotions. Most, most people want to make the right decision, so sometimes do that. You have to give it some time to take the emotion out of it.
Okay, thank you.
So we just write our name and just pull it over and pass it?
Yeah, when you pass it over, I'm going to have to. Any questions? Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
Trustee Irons voted for Eric Heinrich.
Heinrich?
Heinrich.
Heinrich.
Heinrich, okay.
I could be confusing names, Eric, too.
I know. When I addressed Eric, I was like, which one's my?
Trustee Kristin voted for Randy Bane. Chairman Thompson voted for Randy Bane.
Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations.
Third time's the charm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great. I appreciate the opportunity.
I appreciate you. Thanks for applying for the school board. Yes, that's awesome.
Truthfully, I'm unsure how you, how many people will apply for the school board, so. So that's great, so glad to hear it, so. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We will welcome to the school board.
Thank you.
We will be sworn in at our next meeting, which is March ninth.
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you, March eleven. And then you'll get to sit up here with us.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Very much. What are we doing?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Therefore, I need a motion to appoint Randy Bane as Zone Five trustee.
Zone one.
Zone one.
Zone.
It was in the agenda wrong, by the way.
Oh, yeah, Zone One trustee. Whoopsies, not a worry. Well, actually, should, do we have to modify that?
Yeah.
To stay correct? Okay, so I need a, I would like a motion to correct the agenda for the action item to be appointing Zone One trustee, not Zone Five.
So I would move to amend the agenda to reflect the appointment of Zone One trustee instead of Zone Five.
I'll second that. Hearing the motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Based on that, I would now like a motion to appoint Randy Bane as Zone One trustee.
I'll move to appoint Randy Bane as Zone One trustee.
I'll second that motion.
Having a motion in a second, do we need a vote for him? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the motion carries. And on that, the meeting is adjourned.